Ready? Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is the Monday, June 26th, meeting of the Rockport Select Board. I'll call the meeting to order. We have a new board. Welcome to all the new members, to Mark, to Tom, and to Doug, Vice Chair Owen. And my message to the town on this is tremendous turnout. Really gratified to see a high turnout for the election. More than anything, that's nice to see. So here we are. We have a fairly short agenda tonight. We'll begin with just a couple of announcements, and the agenda has some announcements on it. And my preliminary announcement, I guess, for the agenda is take the dates that are on there with a little bit of a grain of salt right now. We're still sort of getting our calendar in order. We still have to deal with some Select Board member's schedules and things of that nature. But we will be meeting next on July 10th. That meeting will happen here at seven o'clock. The July 24th meeting yet to be seen, and the workshop meetings, as I say, take those with a grain of salt right now. We're still working on the schedule. We do have some minutes that we need to approve, the minutes of Thursday, June the first.
I move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, June 1st, as written.
And I actually will second that motion. We're in a unique situation here because the Select Board bylaws say we can't approve anything without three votes. We will not have three votes for this because there were only two of the current members of the Select Board who attended that meeting. And so one of the ways, times that you can abstain from vote here is if you are not at the meeting, you can abstain for voting for the minutes, so.
That sounds reasonable.
Does anybody have any, any discussion on that motion on these minutes? If not, call for the vote, all in favor, opposed, and abstained. That's a 2-0-3 vote. And we will, in these unique circumstances, allow that as an approval. Next, for consideration, the meetings of the Monday, June 12th Select Board meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of Monday, June 12th, as written.
And I will second that also. Same situation. Any discussion at all on these minutes?
Oh, just for historical purposes, this is the only, this was at the town office, so there is no live stream of these.
That's correct, yeah. It was a very brief meeting where we dealt with the possibility of changing the article for the Public Works and had an executive session on a labor contract matter.
It's the only time I think the town's ever clapped for anything we've ever done.
That took, that surprised me a little bit. Okay, if there's no discussion at all in favor, opposed, and abstained. And again, 2-0-3. Next, we have the meeting, the organizational meeting of the Select Board from Wednesday, June 14th.
For discussion purposes, I move to accept the minutes of Wednesday, June 14th.
And we do have a supplement here, so, at least as amended.
I believe you said, I don't think this is correct, Ken. I believe you said, "I do not..."
Hang, hang on a second. Do we have a second for the motion? Second, okay, thank you.
I believe, if I remember correctly, on page two, where Ken states, "I believe that serving two terms is enough, and I will not seek reelection again," I believe he said, "And I do not believe I will seek reelection again."
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Is that all right for an amendment?
We already made an amendment.
We made one amendment because the original had said that I, I had had enough, and I wasn't gonna, I didn't, I didn't want to say it that way, which I don't think I did, but I, I, I'm fine. If you, if you recall it that way, then I'm, I don't have an objection to that. Does anybody else have any memory on that that they want to deal with? Okay. And then the only other correction shown here in yellow was the vote for the Vice Chair, which was a vote for candidates, not for and against the motion, which was the original presentation. Any further discussion on these minutes? If not, all in favor of the motion? And that's a unanimous vote, unopposed. Okay, I mentioned the upcoming meetings, and as I say, it's all on the agenda, but, but take those dates with a grain of salt, except for the next Select Board meeting, which will occur as noted on July 10th.
Perhaps it's appropriate for me to just tell, I'll be in Germany at that time.
Yep, okay. And I will want to get your votes, because one of the, one of the meetings that we need to schedule is the Goals Workshop, and, and I held off on scheduling that until I knew, when are you gonna be back?
I'll be back on the 17th.
17th of July?
Yep.
Okay.
So the evening of the 17th, then? Might want to give me a day or two, a day.
Does anybody else have any schedule issues on the board coming up in the next three to four weeks or so?
The week of July 11th through, like, whatever that week is.
Okay.
I'll be bouncing between Moosehead and DC, so that whole week I'll be.
So that week of, but that's the same week. Tom's gone that week, too.
I think that's 17th, the end of the week.
And I think if we're to attend the meeting on the 18th.
On the 18th, yeah.
That might be a...
That's probably, that's...
Not good for the 17th.
Yeah, you won't get back in the evening for that, especially if you're in, especially if you're staying overnight, so. So July 18th is the MMA thing.
We're both gonna go up to that?
I, I believe that to be the correct, yeah. That'll be the one.
Where is that?
Sure, Rangelay, right, Rangelay.
They usually have a few different options that you can do.
There's one in Augusta. You should have gotten that listing of all that stuff. Oh. Geez, I guess I got lucky. Mine was in Waldeboro. I didn't have to drive far to get to it.
I had to go to Augusta, but, in any event, okay. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda for this evening? Hearing none. Time for public comment. Public comment at this time should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome. Prior to each agenda item, further comment granted only by permission from the board, all public comment should be brief and to the point. Do we have anybody who wishes to make public comment this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ann Philly. I live in Rockport, and I guess I'm kind of here in two capacities. One for the Friends of the Rockport Public Library, and also for the Library Committee, of which I'm currently Chair. In terms of the Friends, I just wanted to mention to you that we're having our annual book sale. And so I just wanted to make sure that you had that information, 'cause I didn't see it on here. So I'd just like to tout it just a bit, and just remind the board that for the last two years, the Friends have raised $16,000 for the benefit of the library. And last year, $8,000 went to the, the new building fund that the town has oversight of. So, you know, it is a, a big portion of the work that we do. Kudos to my husband, who's one of the toters and packers, so, pricers. So that will be the 14th, 15th, 16th. Free books on the 17th, and it'll be done at the Midcoast Recreation Center. So, we're always looking for volunteers.
Of July?
Of July.
Okay.
I think you're gonna be in Germany.
I will, sadly.
Send your family.
Saying those free books.
So we'll have specialty books. We have quite a number. We have over 30,000 items that'll be out for sale. So I'm done with that particular public comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comment this evening? Okay, next we have the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Town Manager, the floor is yours.
A moment everybody's waiting for. As you can see in my written report, the Summer Street is, we're hopefully gonna start that soon. We're just waiting for what to do about the banking that's on the lower end of the street. We did some work there, and we want to stabilize that banking. Everything else is pretty much set. They've got to come in and they've got to regrind that road and get the grade correct, because the grade is incorrect. And then they have to install some curtain drains, drains, under the, the road to catch water that's traveling down the hill, under the road, and get that into the under-drain system. The railing will be replaced as part of the insurance claim. There was a, a truck that was trying to make it up the hill and lost power and rolled backwards, and thankfully, the railing was the, the thing that caught him and kept him from going into Larry's house or into the, into this river in the back. It was one part of the project that went really smoothly was the stairs and the, and the railing, and that's the part that cut damage with the truck.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's kind of an ongoing thing, are you maintaining good relations with the neighbors and informing them about when things are gonna happen?
I think so, yeah. I think they're, they're all, I think they're all aware, but I'll double check that.
Thank you.
Most of the work is gonna take place in the lower end of the hill, so it's not up by people's homes. That, it was very inconvenient last year for many of those folks. But most of the, most of the work is gonna take place from the last driveway down the hill. So that, that work, I think we're, we're ready to start. We're, it's just the, figuring out what the, what to do with that slope. As you remember, we held, or maybe some of you don't, some of you don't remember. We held out some of the money from payment to the contractor for the work that he's responsible for. And then we also held money out from the bond to do the under drains, the curtain drains connected into the under-drain system and for the wall, because that wasn't part of the original plan. The high sidewalk is, it's, it seems like it's come to a halt. It, it hasn't. But the, the challenge is, is a, I did have it explained to me now, so that I understood, stand it now. Because originally, originally, it was gonna be three to five weeks to have the, the railing that goes up along the edge is custom fabricated. It's a custom-built fence or railing. And they were all set to do that last fall, but when we couldn't complete the project last fall because the utilities weren't moved, it was delayed. Well, we, when we delayed it six months, the price didn't go up. But the company that's doing the fabricating of the railing, it, it's more difficult for them. They don't have the time, so they're trying to fit it into projects that they're already doing. So I think the current schedule is to have it done by the end of July. What ha, what has to happen is it has to be, it has to be fabricated and custom-fit in place. And then, once it's all custom-fit, then it gets all set to get powder-coated and repainted. So it, it makes it, you know, it's, I think they were out of there doing the concrete work about four weeks ago. So they're trying to fit in the, the railing into, into the schedule that they already have for other work that they picked up over the winter. So that's, that's what's slowing that down. The Route 1 North side works, Route 1 North sewer extension has been completed and within budget. Right now, there is only one new user on the system, but there's a potential to have three users on that, that new section of the system. The Route 1 and Route 90 traffic lights, the poles have been installed, and as you know, that, that, they've been putting up their lights and doing a lot of the work. Owen pointed out today, and Mike was aware of it, that one of the signs that they have, last week it was they put a sign up, and it was definitely wrong. And this week, they put up, when you're coming from the high school end, from the west on Route 90, the way the arrows are, it has the right-hand turn lane being a straight across the intersection, and then a turn. And then the left-hand lane is for a left-hand turn. And so Mike was, was contacting the, the person that's in charge of that project to see if we could get that switched back to the old way, which was the left-hand lane being straight, straight and left-hand turns, and the right-hand lane being right-hand turns. Because I did drive through that after you spoke to me, Owen, and it's, you, you're right. You get in that right lane, try to do it from the right lane. You have to kind of zig.
And you're not, it's not a straight across. Like, the closest one you can get to be straight across is only the left-hand lane. From the right-hand lane, you gotta do this slalom.
And it's also, it's gonna back up traffic up the, up the street.
Will, will there be appropriate striping on the road to indicate two lanes?
I would imagine so, but I, you know, again...
I know in the past, they didn't feel comfortable doing that, because they did, the road width was not such to allow it, so it's still likely to be confusing.
It would be helpful.
Yeah.
But they have to fix, they have to get the signs right, because right now, the way it is...
They don't want them to paint the road wrong.
Yeah, the way it is now, it's, it's, as Owen said, it's really, it's, it's gonna make that right-hand lane back up.
They'd be required to have two separate lanes, because they put two signs up.
There you go.
So they should be required to have two separate.
Yep.
And have it painted as such.
So then, let's see, Mount Pleasant Street, we're working along on that. Hopefully, we're, the, the, the documents will be able to get out to bid in the next week or so. We've been expecting those documents to go out very soon. Walker Park, as, as we know, there's been a lot of attention to that over the past few weeks. It, this is a problem that happens several years. There's been a new, a newer development in this. When we had it, when we had it tested again this time, it came back with a trace of chlorine in it, and it turns out that there was a water leak further up the hill that was contributing to the water running down. They've since fixed, fixed that water leak, and it's drying up some, but it's still, it's still really pretty wet there. It's a problem that happens every year, and if, if, if the board wants, I can get a price on what it costs to catch that water fur, further up the hill and drain it. But it's gonna, it's gonna come with a cost, to get it drained down the hill.
Ooh, just super quick on that. A cost so we could put into the capital?
Yeah, you could put it in caperous.
Investment plan?
Yep.
Their improvements plan, that would make sense.
And then you can rank it with the other items as well. But some of it, we may want to just wait. If there was a problem that's been repaired, we might want to...
We're still gonna have a problem, because it's that way every year.
But, but we perhaps don't have, perhaps we have more of a problem this year because of the leak issue or whatever.
Whose side of the fence was the leak on? I noticed the water company's lines were on the neighboring side of the fence.
I don't know. I don't know whose side it was on.
But it's definitely showing itself.
Riding, riding the ledge.
That picnic table in the awning is terrible.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, it's a problem that, I know when Mike and I went down there last year, it was a problem. And according to Steve, it was a problem when he was a kid, when he played there, so, you know, it's... But it was worse this year. Normally, it, what happens is normally it dries up. By the time people start to really use the park in the spring, it's starting to dry up. This year, it didn't. Whether, how much of that was a contributing factor was the weather, that we had so much rain, or was the leak? So we, we don't know that. So do we make a motion to ask?
Not now. I think, you know, we...
Not necessarily. We'll get, we'll...
Did you get the numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
And it'll be, be looked at as part of the, in addition to the capital improvement plan. So the streetlights, it's been a constant problem. As you, as you remember, Mark, getting them to repair streetlights is, is a constant battle. When I went through the list, compared the lists of streetlights, there were only three streetlights that are duplicate lights that, we have 200 and, you probably know the number better than me, Mark, but I think it's...
I want to say 220 or something, plus or minus.
And at any given time, you know, 15 or 20 of them are out. And, and getting them replaced is a, is a bit of a challenge. You know, I'm surprised, because the, the ones that have bothered, we all have our pet ones. The ones that have bothered me is the ones that they moved to the other side of Pascal when we had the utilities moved. And they were all winter long, they were out, and, and I complained about them all winter. Because they moved them across the street, and they didn't hitch them up. They put them up on the poles, but they never turned, they never put the wires to them. And I complained about them all, all winter. And then apparently, when the officer, which Randy has an officer on nights that periodically, I think every two or three months, goes out and checks and gets a list of all the streetlights that are, that are out. He said that they were on. If it's dark when we leave here, I'm gonna drive down and double-check myself.
I think what he, I think what he told me is he does it once a month, and then they fax them in once the, the next morning at the beginning of the month.
Right.
Perhaps a confirmation email from CMP saying when they're fixed. And then we could tabulate how many days we've been without, and perhaps adjust the billing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question to you is, what can we do to help? You know, as you say, we have 220 lights, and 15 to 20 are out. I, I did a little bit of back-of-the-envelope math, and it's basically $27 a month per light that we're paying, so...
Yeah, it's, one of the...
Would a letter from the Select Board help?
I don't, I don't really think so. It's...
No.
And also, if we, we also, we held, held money back from Summer Street for the construction, you know? Why don't we kind of hold it back?
It's a different contract situation. I don't know. I mean, if we don't pay the CMP bill, my guess would be that they'll turn all the lights off.
Well, I'm not saying don't pay the whole bill, just, you know?
The lawyers would love it. One of the things we are look, one of the things we are looking at is, we've started a process. Rockland has, has been slowly switching over their lights to LEDs and owning the lights. And Megan is working on that now with Rockland on changing out all of their streetlights. They, I don't know if you remember, they did the downtown streetlights, and they saved a, they, they... They, they saved a whole bunch of money, and the payback on replacing all those lights was about three years. And not only is the payback for getting better lights, but it's also you're using a far less power. And so we're looking at coming back with a proposal in the next year of, of us doing that with our streetlights. And then we would own the streetlights, and we'd only be responsible for paying the power to CMP. And so then, it would, they would become our responsibility to maintain them. But it's, once they're up with LEDs, once the LEDs are up and in place, the, the maintenance on them is, is far, far less. And the amount we pay is, for electricity, the amount you're paying for electricity is also far less.
That comes with a high upfront cost.
Yes, and the payback is about, is about three to five years.
And there also, we heard at another meeting at one point, there were people who were concerned about the impact on wildlife and things like that. Because the wavelength of light is a little different or something like that.
Yeah, now, they're, they're changing the, the, the light spectrum. Jan knows a lot about, Jan, Jan's not Rosenbaum.
Yeah.
But Jan, Jan has been sitting in on those meetings also, and about the light spectrum. The, the light spectrum is changing dramatically, so that, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of light spectrum, but Jan seemed to understand it.
I don't either. I just, I just mention it because it's, it's a problem that sounds easy, but like a lot of these things, sometimes there are complicating factors.
Well, on, just to finish up on that, then, you know, once again, one of the things I sort of ran on was maintenance of our existing infrastructure. And so I'd like to hear more, you know, about this next month. Maybe we can review with the police department how we're doing with the list and kind of keep it alive.
They're not our lights. You know, they belong to CMP.
But we're paying for them.
Oh, we do pay for them, yes.
So, you know, again, it might seem like a small, small thing, but these small things sort of add up. And I've had constituents complain to me already, so, I just want to keep it up in our awareness. And then again, what can we do to help?
And you'd, you'd think, it took me, I don't know how many months, and Mark remembers this, with the, the light that's out front here, in front of the 18th Central Street, or it's Shepherd's Pie, that, that's been out, was out for a long time. And it took me a lot of phone calls and many emails to get them to replace that light, because it would come on, it would go off. It'd come on really bright, and then it would go off. And it was in a dangerous spot where the sidewalk along, next to Saltwater Farms, kind of, not Saltwater Farms, 18th Central, drops off, and it's dark there when the light's out. And they finally did fix that one, so... It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing project. There's another one up on, by you, Ken, that's been out for two years.
Yeah.
You would, you, you just...
I like it when it's not on, because I can see the stars on people.
But another neighbor that lives up by you would like it, would like it on.
Can I ask you, how long until you think Megan would have something that we can look at as its own standalone agenda item?
You're, it's, you're looking at a year down the road, really, because...
Before we have something to look at, or before we're ready to move on it?
Well, you're talking about, I, I think in the next six months, I think, we're working with Rockland on it. And I'm sure, I, I think now that, that Audrey has moved to Camden, it'll probably be the three towns will be looking at it together. Because, but, you know, it's, it's a, it's a process of evaluating. Right now, right now, what we're doing is we're getting all of our streetlights onto GIS system over the summer. So all the GI, all the streetlights, we're gonna be located on the actual pole, so we know exactly where they are, because it's, as Mark knows, getting them to establish, to tell you where they are and finding them all is a challenge. Once we, once we get them in GIS, they'll, we'll be able to click on a map and say, here's all, all of the streetlights, and here's the exact number. And then we can start to calculate the replacement costs.
Is it worth having you ask our attorney what the ramifications would be about, you know, withholding payment from CMP?
Yeah, I can do that.
And that would be...
Partial.
Yeah, yeah, proportional, so we pay for, we're perfectly willing to pay for what we get, but what's the implication?
If you can tabulate the number of nights that you were out based on when you reported it and when they emailed back that it was fixed, and then proportionally throughout the year, perhaps subtract that much from their bill.
Yeah, I just want to know the legality of that.
Yeah, no.
I think that's a quick question they can, they can answer for us.
Yes, exactly, they can. Next, we had, as everybody's aware, we had that leak in the library, which thankfully, Lynda, our cleaning person, was able to discover and shut off, which caused, really, we were lucky. I think Ben said there were three books damaged, and one beanbag chair, and a couple of, darn those beanbag chairs. They're, they're a valuable commodity, I'll take.
At a yard's?
Yeah.
They'd probably bring a dollar.
Yeah, and a couple of power strips on the floor. But other than that, we had no damage to any books, computer equipment, or anything like that. We've had, Superior's been in there. The heat's been up to like 80 degrees. They've been in there with deep, big hu, industrial-sized dehumidifiers, just sucking the, the moisture out of the air. And also huge fans blowing air around, and particularly in the area along the, on the carpets and on the floor where the floorboards got, got saturated to dry that out. And Superior has a moisture testing meter. It's a, a thing that they can shine on spots and tell the moisture content. And they've gotten the walls down so that the moisture's all gone out of the walls, the moisture's all gone, gone out of the carpets, and all gone, gone out of the wallboard, the sheet rock, with a couple of minor exceptions, which they think will be gone as of today. The next thing they're doing is, is, I think it was this afternoon, they were putting the antibacterial, anti...
Tomorrow, if I understand.
Tomorrow, they're doing the anti-mold treatment on the carpeting. And then the next day is they come in and they, no, I think, I think they were doing that, that, that piece, because tomorrow, they're doing the shampooing, they're doing the shampooing tomorrow, I think. So that Wednes, today's Monday, so that Wednesday, they can reopen at, they can reopen Wednesday at 11 o'clock with the normal time. And we should be good to go. Who is paying for this?
Hey, that was my question.
Is, who is paying for this is, our lawyers are gonna have to...
The lawyers are paying for it.
Yeah, the lawyers are gonna have to chase this one down. Because of course, the property owner says, "It's not my responsibility." And, you know, our lawyers are saying, "Well, it kind of is." But at, at some point, though, we have to look at, you know, it, we don't want to spend a dime to, to make a nickel here. And it's, at some point, we have to just say, we have to get the library open. It's gonna get fixed. We, we, you know...
We're all paying for it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
The, the, I mean, the good news is that the damage to books, you know, irreplaceable books or equipment and all that, that was very limited. It's gonna be the cost of the cleanup from Superior Maintenance is gonna be the, the challenge. What our lawyer currently is recommending is that we submit it to the, to the owner, ask him to, to submit it to his insurance company. And when, when his, uh, if he's, if he refuses to do that, then at least we are on record that we asked for him to, to submit it. And if he didn't, then if it comes back that when we, when we vacate the place and he says, well, there's mold in the walls or something, at that point, he can't turn around and say, you know, he wasn't informed or wasn't, wasn't given an option of paying to have more fixed. So, uh, employee training, uh, we've been doing a lot of training in the town office. Everybody did a active shooter training, which Travis Ford ran for us, which was very, um, very informative and very helpful. We also re, also, all employees received a hands-on fire extinguisher training that was done a little bit ago. And the next training we have is here at the Opera House, I believe, Terry, right? Is on, uh, is on ticks and tick-borne diseases for people that are working outside police offices, public work crews and all of that. And, uh, we've invited Camden, uh, to participate and we're gonna be live streaming it and recording it so that if any residents want to watch it, they're, they can do that too.
Don't mess around with that stuff. We had two residents with Powassan recently.
You, what?
Powassan, which is not Lyme, it's another tick-borne illness. And I believe Brenda Richardson has Lyme and is dealing with Lyme right now, too.
No treatment for Powassan either, you literally die.
I don't even know what that is.
It was Vern, and it was Vern Hunter.
Oh, really?
But the guy's not young.
Well, it's the one that killed, uh-
Lynn Snow.
And the artist from Rockland.
Lynn Snow.
Lynn Snow.
Yeah.
It's not, not good stuff, no.
Thank you.
That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Uh, any questions for the manager?
Is that, is that library on slab? That's why that happened?
Yes, yeah. Oh, and I, did I, does everyone understand it was, what happened was the, the, the pipe that runs from the, up through the slab to the, to the toilet tank, that burst.
Yeah, it was fresh water.
It was fresh water, yeah.
Even though it came from a toilet with fresh water.
That pipe burst and so it was leaking water out all night.
Yeah. Did you skip over Mount Pleasant Street?
I, 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 I just said, we're, we're working on getting-
Everything, everything going according to plan there, okay.
He skipped over sidewalks and road painting.
And then I want to-
Oh, I did, oh, I'm sorry, sidewalks and road painting, cause that's all done.
Yeah. I do want to highlight, and I hope that some of the press are paying attention, um, on the, on, under the section of your report, Route 1 and 90 Traffic Lights, I liked the way you wrote this here about the sidewalk that we installed last summer because the press wrote an editorial about the sidewalk to nowhere, which really bothered me. And this, if you read this, you, maybe the press will understand a little bit more what was going on, uh, from your report. You know, by putting in the sidewalk now enables to get the state to install new traffic lights as opposed to the town having to pay in excess of forty-five thousand to upgrade the traffic lights in the future. And then farther down, ultimately have a goal of getting a sidewalk along Route 90, it's many years away, but by spending twelve thousand dollars now saves us four to five times that much down the road. So, uh, I just want to point that out and thank you for writing that in, and that was well said.
And to add just a little bit more, it's not only 1 and 90, but it's seventeen and ninety. It's also being refitted with new lights, right?
Uh, but this was the time when we could get the pedestrian crossing lights. And one of the biggest issues for pedestrian access in Rockport is getting across Route 1. There is no place to safely get across Route 1 and we now have-
I just, I describe it, it's like trying to cross the Amazon.
Yeah.
You know?
And also just because we're on it, we really tried as a town to grease the skids and do everything we could to make this project go smoothly. And despite our best efforts, I mean, it is, that intersection, in my opinion, made the town look quite foolish. Like we had no clue what we were doing when a lot of it fell on the state. I mean, we were poised, set, ready, on their timeline, doing everything that they told us to.
Yeah.
And like Rick says in it, about nine months.
And that should surprise you why? You know?
Just to represent.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not my committee.
We have no unfinished business this evening, uh, under new business. We have a committee application for the planning board from Clark Doran. And I don't see Clark here tonight. And the planning board is an important board in town. I would, I, I, his application is nicely done, uh, but in the past, this board has, uh, tried to, uh, to at least have a meet and greet with these folks at a meeting. So, I'm gonna suggest-
I would move to re-table it until the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion, any further discussion on that? I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Uh, we also have a situation with re appointing planning board members, which we'll get to later, which complicates the matter a little bit as well. So, uh, if no further discussion, all in favor on the motion to table? Any opposed? Okay, that's a five to nothing vote unanimous. And if we could get a message to Mr. Doran, that we would like to see him on July, whatever it is, July eleventh. Okay, the next item is, um, the mutual assistance agreement for Rockport and the city of Rockland. We have that in our packets. Is, is this the same agreement that's currently in force? Are there any changes to it?
Yeah, this is the same agreement that's currently in force.
I looked it over, it seemed boilerplate. Did anyone, did anything stand out to anyone?
Mark had a question, but, uh-
I, you know, I'm, I guess it singles out the Penn Bay aspect of it. I would just hope that if somebody needed help here anywhere, it would be extended, uh, from Rockland. And ours doesn't have any restrictions as to where we'd help them, so.
Right.
I'm okay with it.
I think the, the way I read it, and maybe I'm wrong, but the way I read it was that if there's assistance needed, that there has to be a request for assistance from one town to the other. And I read it as the Penn Bay section being that, well, since they're there so much that we don't have to, they don't have to make a special request or to come into town, they can just go there. And then, you know, as time permits, they'll inform the Rockport Department that they're there. That's the way I read that, just as a time saver.
Yeah, no, I'm good with the way it is, it's good.
So, I have a question. How does this work with our, uh, chief sharing agreement with Camden? Is there any dovetailing there with this agreement and, and that arrangement?
No, it doesn't change, it doesn't, there's no effect on that arrangement.
Okay.
And we, I don't know, maybe it's a, a good time, since this may be an early-ish meeting, to have Rick or someone just briefly go over what is mutual aid for some of the, the newer members? We, cause we have a lot of agreements like this with other towns as well. Um, I think our fire, we have a pretty robust mutual aid agreement.
Mutual aid agreements between towns are pretty common. And what this does is, and, and, and Mark can probably address this better than me, but what this does is allow, uh, a, a, the, the neighboring town to come into our, come to our assist, our town and, and have arrest powers, uh, in our town and support our officers when needed. And so we do that, uh, pretty much with all the surrounding towns. We have mutual aid agreements of some kind. And, and fire is the big user of it, but in, in our case, police also, um, between the, uh, between Camden and Rockport and Rockport and Rockland.
Maybe also if you could just briefly touch on the differences between a mutual aid agreement with the city of Rockland and our cross swearing of officers with the town of Camden, cause there is a difference there.
It, it's a slight one, but it, the, the cross swearing of officers is like a belt and suspenders approach. The mutual aid agreement we have with Camden would, would work, but it, the cross swearing of making the Camden officers and Rockport officers sworn across the, across town lines, it gives them that added, added protect, protection of being, gives them and us the added protection of them being sworn in as police officers in the other town. So, it's, it's, it's basically a belt and suspenders approach, which we don't have with-
Years ago, most everybody was sworn in as a deputy of some sort.
Some sort in the other town.
So, that covered you if you went to a neighboring town.
Yeah.
Now it's just more refined.
And the, the Camden and Rockport departments work a little more closely together and they're, you know, with, with the new chief sharing arrangement we have, for example, if there's a call at Penn Bay, you know, automatically a Camden officer will respond as well as a Rockport officer until somebody's on the scene and can assess the situation and say, okay, we're fine, we do, you can, you can head off.
Which is the suspenders part of the belt and the suspenders. Rockland will only come if we basically say, hey, we've got, we've got a situation and we need some help. Camden, because we've cross sworn, they just, they're all on the same frequency and channel. They call in and it's just like calling in another Rockport cop. It's different with Rockland because then you have to start getting chief's approval or the highest. It's all laid out in there, who starts approving that stuff.
And, and the other way for, for Camden also, if they have a situation, our officers who are on duty are gonna hear it and they're gonna, they're gonna work their way over that way. You know, if they've got a bar fight downtown or something.
Start going and ask for permission when you're halfway there.
Yeah. And so far, that, that agreement between Camden and Rockport has worked very well on many different occasions. Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
I move to approve the town of Rockport and city of Rockland mutual assistance agreement for three years, effective dates July first, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote. Okay, our next, uh, item is the committee liaison assignment list. Um, we had our workshop last week where we talked about these and got a preliminary idea of who would be interested in which committees. And because we have three new members on the board, it, it means that a fairly significant change in the, in the liaison assignments. And what I did is take the, uh, the list of everybody's sort of preferences the other night and, and give a first shot at it here, which you have in your packet. And like I say, like I said here, this is not to be the final situation, but it, it's a way that it possibly could work. A couple of comments, the issues that I see with it right now is that Doug has five, um, and, and Tom has three. Well, you expressed interest in a lot of them.
You're retired, doctor.
So, we may, you know, we might want to adjust that depending on what everybody's, uh, proclivity is. And also on the capital improvement committee, I listed two liaisons to that. Both of you guys expressed interest in that. And given that that committee, I think it's gonna have a fairly heavy workload over the next year, I think having two liaisons to that committee is, is something, and it, again, it's up to the rest of the board, not up to me, but it's my suggestion that we might do that. Uh, we did it in the past with the library committee. We occasionally had two liaisons to the library committee during periods of time when they were extremely active. And, and I think that the capital improvement committee is gonna be quite active this time, too. So, with that said, I'll open the floor to comments about what you like, what you don't like about this list, what you'd like to trade off, and things like that.
Well, when I saw it, that caught my attention too. And, um, I wonder if I could be excused from the Opera House committee.
Does anybody else want to pick that one up?
Isn't that one of the ones you mentioned meets during the day?
I don't remember when they, well, Terry, when do they meet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would be willing if not for that.
Yeah, and that's, this was a different board that we have now, we have different schedules. And so, uh, and we're, in fact, uh, we're getting, talking about the library committee. I met with, with Ann the other day and, and I suggested Tom for the library committee, but, but with the proviso that they would have to change their meeting times. Cause right now, they meet at ten o'clock in the morning, which would be a non-starter for you and, and-
Do you think that would be possible?
Ann expressed a willingness, I think, cause she's got other members on the committee too who have some schedule issues.
What's your, what's your earliest in the afternoon?
I, um, I can't leave until three, so.
I think we can find like a four-thirty meeting or something.
Sure, I, or, uh, you know, three fifteen even is okay.
I, we're gonna come on Friday, I mean, Thursday, so I'll bring that up for them.
Okay.
I think they can change.
Okay, well, thanks for trying to accommodate.
Well, we're happy to, if somebody wants to be on our liaison.
Yay.
So, back to Opera House. Does anybody else want to jump on Opera House? And, and I guess, again, Tom is the one who's a little short here.
Yeah, I'll just say, I hate to, uh, I would be willing to serve on that committee if it's possible for the time of the committee to meet, to change.
Yeah, and we have to have a meeting this Friday, I need to talk to the group and see.
Okay.
I know that there were, there was talk in our last meeting that, um, Friday is not preferred because it's a weekend, but also too, I think, they wouldn't mind an afternoon, so I can ask to find out for you.
Yeah, I mean, during, during the summer, when school's not in session, I have more flexibility. But during the school year, we'd probably have to be, well, I have to rescind a comment I made a minute ago because the school calendar is changing. The schedule for the school day is changing, it's going back. So, my availability is not till after three thirty, so.
Just make that four o'clock.
Yeah, weren't you meeting at one point, point at like four o'clock?
We were meeting at five.
Okay.
But that might be late for some of our other members, so I have to look at their work schedules as well, so we'll-
And those are once a month typically?
Typically.
Okay.
I recommend it's once a month. And Opera House, I believe, is once a month as well with maybe an occasional skip. Is that right?
Every, it can be six weeks sometimes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thanks for looking into it.
I took myself off ambulance review, both Mark and Doug expressed interest in that. And, uh, and that is a two-member, there are two representatives from Rockport on that committee. Uh, and I picked up ZBA, nobody else did, so I took the bullet for that one.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, they meet very infrequently.
Yeah, four, four times a year at the most.
So, I guess, any further comments? So, the, right now, what I hear is, uh, we would change Opera House from Doug to Tom. Is anybody else, I, I say, I don't want to necessarily impose this on anybody, but I, I tried to gather everybody's comments from the other night and make the proposal.
I think the way you allocated them is a really nice, fair representation of what we discussed.
Okay.
These don't actually take a formal approval, do they?
No, we don't have to have a motion on that. We just, we've agreed it. And, and we will have to keep the, pending the, uh, library committee and the Opera House being willing to change their meeting times. And what I will try to do is, uh, I, I'll have Stacy, uh, when I get the list finalized, I'll send it to Stacy and have her reach out to the committee chairs and let them know who their new liaison is gonna be and then have them get in touch with you guys so that you know when the meetings are, that you'll have to attend and things like that.
And you're still gonna put the calendar together as it had been before?
Yeah, eventually. I don't have it tonight. I'm still working on getting the, you know, getting control of that from the former chairman, so.
So, Ken, would we vote on these tonight?
Yeah. Like I say, typically, we don't have a motion on this, we just sort of agree.
Oh, right.
Who the liaisons are gonna be, so, uh, so, like I say, what I will do is I'll make the one change to the list we've made, pending the, uh, changing of the meetings. I'm gonna go to the library committing, meeting this week and so I'll let them know and, and be privy to that discussion of them hopefully changing their meeting, uh, time. And then, uh, we'll have Stacy reach out to the chairs.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item is to reappoint committee members. We have a list of all the committee members whose terms were up this year and whether or not they're willing to continue or not. And as we can see, almost everybody's willing to continue with a couple of exceptions. And one of them being, uh, a one-year term for Alex, which we'll talk about in a minute.
What is BAR, Board of Assessment Review?
Board of Assessment Review. In the past, we had also, we had always asked for the chair to make a recommendation as to whether they wanted the member to continue or not. And also, uh, for the select board liaison to make that recommendation. And you see that in the column we have here with checks, Owen didn't respond, so, um, I have to ask Owen in public, you know, are you okay with all these guys?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of that. And we do have, um, negative recommendations from, uh, the former liaison to the planning board for the two members up for reappointment there. And so, um, I guess what I would suggest we need to do is we need to talk about the planning board a little bit.
Mr. Chair, can, can I address that?
Yes, you can comment on this, uh, this, uh, agenda item.
Public comment from the public. I'm Jeff Parker, a former select board member. Those were given in, in tandem with the idea of, um, of bringing both the planning board and the zoning board down to five regular members plus two alternates. Seven plus two starts to get very cumbersome. And if attendance is an issue, then one says you have better, better rates of success with, with five people versus seven. And what starts to happen as particularly the planning board, which is a lot of give and take and back and forth with clients that don't necessarily know the entire process, that I think that this board might want to take an opportunity, perhaps to put off, put, put off those, uh, those, appointments to those two, uh, boards and look at the question of whether the town would be better served with, uh, with five members rather than seven. Because it, it lends an efficiency, it lends a, um, uh, more of a coherent meeting that's, that's easier and, and just faster. Because it, it lends an efficiency, it lends a, um, uh, more of a coherent meeting that's, that's easier and, and just faster to go through. So that was my recommendation, um, and in terms of creating a, a smaller.
So your recommendation then was, was to shrink?
Was to actually shrink, yeah.
And, and as opposed to recommending necessarily against, um, those particular candidates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have no idea what you're talking about. Is there background material to this or?
The planning board, as far as the size of the planning.
In our packet, is there anything?
Uh, just, just this right now. Uh, and, and Mr. Parker is explaining his reasoning for, uh, a negative vote on the recommendation.
Maybe I'll. Where's the recommendation, is that?
It's right, it's right in this column right here, S B liaison.
So that check indicates that, that's the recommendation of the select board liaison.
Right, the select board liaison, every year when these renewals come up, and you, you have new liaisons, you'll get that. And then they'll ask, you know, do you wish, do you recommend this member for a reappointment if they want to be reappointed?
So if someone who has struck through is someone who is not willing to continue?
That's right, so those, these people, their term is up and they've said, I've served my time and I don't want to, don't want to continue.
So just for the sake of being ultimately clear, we have two people, and the way I'm reading this, Jim Ostheimer and Ted Skoronsky are on the board. They're willing to continue, but the former select board liaison member is recommending that they not continue. Four reasons of downsizing the committee.
Yeah, or, or continue as alternates, but, but yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, one of them is an alternate. Now, to that point, um, I've actually heard other suggestions from other folks who deal with the planning board. That, that the planning board's size would be better served by being smaller. However, and maybe the town manager can correct me here, I believe that that would take a charter change. Think the planning board.
I, I don't think so, because, because it's 10, 12 years ago, it was five members.
Yeah.
And, and the charter has been in effect for 12, you know, 12 to 14 years, so.
See if I can find it.
Uh, I, I could be wrong in that, but.
Charter right here. Thank you.
So of the people that are on the committee, how did we determine these two versus other participants?
Um, they're all, they all have three-year terms and they're staggered.
Okay, so these two.
So when their terms are up.
So these are people whose terms are up.
Right, these people are, terms are up and we ask them every year if they would like to renew.
So, and part of that might be, is there currently someone, obviously, the two people that are listed want to do it more. Is there anybody that's currently listed and may have a, a term that goes another year or two? Would they be looking to get off?
That, we, we don't have any information on that.
Well, that's why I guess I'm asking, is you've got two people that want to stay.
Right.
Is there anybody that might be keen on getting done? So then that would make this decision a little easier.
In other words, have somebody leave earlier than their term expires?
Did, have they all been contacted and do we know whether anybody would like to get done early?
Well, not looking at that particular list, I know that.
Typically, we don't ask them before their terms are expired.
Right, did Terry McKenzie opt herself out?
Terry McKenzie opted herself out.
Okay, cause that was one.
At one point, she was going to, uh, ask for one more year, I believe, um, to stay on for one more year, but I.
Right.
But for whatever her personal reason.
And the only other person that has, has, you know, at times volunteered that, that they would not renew would be the chair at the end of next year.
So you have seven people, Terry's voluntarily getting done, so now you're down to six. And you're looking to get rid of two of the six, which leaves you four.
No, I would, I would, uh, one of those people is a, is a.
Is an alternate.
Is an alternate.
Do you happen to remember when the planning board was anticipating coming and giving an update to the board, this board?
They are November, I believe.
I'm just wondering if it would make sense to bump that up sooner.
Yeah.
Give their chair a little bit of prep time.
But then again, and, and then again, this is the point of view of just, of, of me, you know, having had years' experience on the ZBA. But as a board, this board may decide otherwise and that's fine. But I just wanted to explain why the, why the recommendations on that to.
I would, um, say that number one, Ted having given interest not only in serving on the planning board, but trying to run for select board. And being here tonight would give him a little bonus point in my book. But, um, that's just my.
And the question is, does Ted, do, do you want to continue as an alternate, Ted, or?
May I speak? Jeff, I appreciate what you said.
Okay.
Bring you sort of up to date, we did have a workshop, uh, last, within the last two weeks. So many things have been happening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of the, uh, the people who are now on a select board. I hope you do a great, good job. If not, I will be here to make sure you do. Other than that, when we had a meeting, the workshop, and I know there was a lot of discussion of whether we should go down to five or seven. And I believe the strong feeling on the, on the planning board was that we should stay at seven. And that was the chairman and everybody else kind of being unanimous on it. Because it, it's a board, it's not just a plan committee. It, it's very important to the town, a lot of decisions are made. And there's times when maybe people can't make it. And yes, it's, they, they finally have, uh, like myself, a, uh, an alternate. But in the past, they haven't had these alternates. And it would, was difficult in having a, a, a board meeting and make, be able to review it properly. And have the, you know, correct quorum. So, I hate to, no. Said Jeff was wrong, I, I believe it should stay at seven.
So what I'm hearing is that you feel, your perspective is that the planning board rather strongly suggests staying at seven.
That's correct.
Jeff, your perspective is that the board, that same body suggests going to five?
No.
No, no, this, this suggestion did not come from the body, it came from, it came from my observation.
Okay, so that's, it's your personal observation that it should go to five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five with two alternates.
Do we have any sort of record of discussion about this on that particular board? Or on the select board?
I, I would totally agree and believe what Ted said in terms of that last workshop meeting.
Okay.
But, so from, from inside the board, they, they feel that. My experience, I'm going to step up a little bit more. My experience, uh, and, and as, uh, the chair alluded to, is that there are people who come before the, the, the planning board on a regular basis. Who find, uh, seven plus two to be an unwieldy number. On behalf of their clients and/or themselves. And, and then those people, um, uh, those people who are brand new to the process, who might only do it once in their lives. Because they're taking on the role of getting a permit, for instance, themselves, uh, find it a little daunting.
Does the chair of the planning board have an opinion on this?
As expressed by Ted, he wants to have seven.
And just a couple of things to throw out. In my brief time sitting on this board, I have, we've had conversations about committee sizes. And so there's just two things to keep in mind. One is, what is an unwieldy amount of folks as far as getting things done? But also just keep in mind that as numbers of committees, as the number of the people in it fluctuate, so too does the number to facilitate a quorum. So if by observation, it has been observed that it's difficult to get enough members of a seven-member board there to be a quorum. By bumping it down to five members, it requires less people to be there to have a quorum and do the business. And so it's a little bit of, I don't, I don't want to say a crap shoot, but you have to try to weigh it. Are there five people capable of doing seven people's worth of work?
Do we have any data available to us about, or can you talk anecdotally even, either one of you, about the degree to which you have had trouble getting a quorum?
Ted and the chair are more appropriate for talking about getting quarums. I may or may not be more appropriate in terms of, of perception with the outside community. My suggestion is on these two boards is to just put it off a month and, and, and for the liaison to have a conversation with the, uh, with the chair. That seems to be the most fair thing. And, and hold, uh, hold off appointments, hold off decisions until the new body, because the new body has a, has a particular point of view as well.
Yep.
I'm, one of the, uh, issues with the planning boards is a little different than some other committees. It is a quasi judicial board. And if there are applications that come before the planning board that span multiple meetings. The way I understand it, if a member misses a meeting, then they have to sort of pull themselves off that particular project, uh, for the duration.
You can usually see those coming from a way out.
Question, before we get, I mean, we've been talking about this forever, but shouldn't we have a motion and a second and then talk about it? Or, I mean, if we're appointing them.
Uh, well, we're, we're.
I mean, we're picking it.
We're looking at the whole, uh, at the whole slate here and trying to decide how that motion is going to go, whether we want to reappoint. You know, one of the ways we could possibly proceed is to reappoint all but the planning board.
Right.
I guess that's where I'm going.
And should hold that off. And, and so sometimes when we have these discussions, we kind of frame the motion rather than making the motion and then having to change it later on, so.
Can I ask another question? Has there been much discussion here at the select board about the way this has been working on the planning board? Is, or is sort of tonight the first that we're hearing about this issue?
Um, there has not been much discussion at the board level, I don't believe. As I say, I've heard from some folks in the community who appear before the planning board on a regular basis that, that they feel that the planning board, that the size of the planning board is a little bit too large. And it's a little unwieldy. The former liaison is making that issue, but then the planning board is saying, Ted has represented the planning board is saying, you know, that it's not an issue, so. We don't have Jamie here, do, are there, do you know, Ted, are there any applications coming up in the next few weeks of the planning board to be dealing with?
Well, outside of the one that you mentioned earlier, earlier in this, uh, this meeting, uh, was about Craig becoming a, uh, a member of the planning board. Right now, I'm at a.
Oh, clerk, yeah.
Yeah, clerk, I'm sorry. Myself and, and, uh, I'm an alternate and as a second alternate. And the last several meetings, uh, the last, the, the new alternate, she just came on. And, um, last meeting we had, we had without, uh, regular board members, we did have seven. The prior meeting, we, we probably had, I believe there was, uh, seven with myself sitting in, in, in place of, well, two of the members that weren't there.
Okay.
I, I, again, uh, I, I believe the planning board has, you know, a different, different take on, no, no, you know, or responsibility into the town. Than most of the other committees. I mean, I'm on the conservation board, I've been on it for some along. And a number of committees have, are, are that way. We don't need lot, yeah, conservation board, we needed more, a lot more members, but anyway.
But again, my question is, is there anything pending in the planning board coming up? We meet again in, on July 10th. Is there anything coming up on the planning board between now and July 10th? Is there anything going to come before the planning board?
We do have a meeting on Wednesday, uh, reviewing a, uh, a, a submittal for a business to do a alteration to their, their property. A business owner.
Okay.
And without, and without these, we'd have how many?
Without these three? If we don't, if we don't reappoint, uh, I mean, Terry is, is no longer on apparently. So it's a seven-member board and this is, two of these are regular members, Terry and, and Jim Ostheimer. And Ted is an alternate, so I'm trying to think in my head.
It would be a status quo and then they would, they would, you know.
Except that Jim, that Jim, if we don't reappoint Jim tonight, then, then he would, he would not be on the board.
And these people that are coming up before them soon, I mean, we're, we'd be putting them off too.
Right.
I mean, I, I'm more inclined to approve it as presented, uh, but that's just my two cents.
I have some concerns about that. I have every reason to think that Jeff is making his recommendation based on, uh, uh, you know, a perspective that is valid. Uh, I'm sure he wouldn't make the recommendation if it weren't valid. Yet sensing that there's overwhelming feeling on that board that they would like to remain at seven. And also hearing from the board that this hasn't been discussed. I have some concerns about making a change at this point until we have some information about the degree to which this has been a problem. Because I think it has the potential to really hurt feelings and to, to be something that we can't necessarily walk back if we don't know the, if we don't have good information to make the decision.
Here's the only thing to complicate it just a little bit more, is that these terms do expire June 30th.
Mm-hmm.
And June 30th is very close. And, uh, there's actually a decent window between June 30th and our next scheduled meeting where we could take this up again. And so my only concern is if there's an emergency and it needs to come to the planning board and we haven't taken action tonight. We may handicap that board by not re, and I, I don't disagree with anything that you said. And, uh, the teeny bit of back history, we, what was it, six months ago, we had some things started popping up about the planning board. And there was some friction on the board. And so we had kind of decided that that was something to look into. We tentatively looked into it and then again, got sidetracked by something else. So I definitely think that spending some more time with the planning board is not a bad idea at all. I just don't necessarily have a good idea on how we approve something tonight to where we're all comfortable. Yet have a fully functioning planning board in case something does come up in that interim time between June 30th and our next meeting.
And all we do by doing that is just keep adding to our future lists of things to do, which we have enough coming at us anyway.
So, Tom. Quick clarification on that possibility that, that you mentioned. They, they have a meeting this Wednesday, which is one that.
Which still is within the 30.
Yeah, yeah, which is within the 30 days. And, um, generally, the, uh, planning board doesn't get emergencies in that it, it, they have, the applicant has to come two weeks before the, before the meeting date anyway. So that this particular meeting squeaked in just the day of that two-week, um, uh, of that two-week timeframe. And, and will involve a, a sidewalk in this particular case. But there's nothing that then would be affected thereafter between now and the next, uh, meeting that this board has.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've, I've reached out to, to the planner and I haven't gotten any answer back, but I have gotten an email from one of the members of the planning board saying that there's really nothing critical. That tabling it to a further discussion is going to impact any projects or anything. That having the conversation at the next meeting would be fine.
Okay.
And he's only one member of the planning board, but he happens to be somebody that's watching.
You know, my.
Scenario, we can do an emergency meeting, that'd be worst-case scenario. Yeah, that's, that, that would be worth, oh, wait.
I mean, having, having had Jeff give his opinion by being the liaison.
I did get an email back, I'm sorry, I, I get, I get a text message back from Jamie, said, sure, no quorum problems this month. He doesn't have a quorum.
All I'm saying is that Jeff has confirmed the fact that, that they would prefer to be at seven, along with what Ted has said. Jeff's opinion is go back to five. You know, I'm inclined to, again, approve it as presented, but.
Uh, and Tom, I want to make sure that I understood your comment. Were you suggesting that we should hold the status quo now or that we should have more of? I guess, I, when, because Mark said that he was, he was inclined to, to approve it as committed and then it seemed like you disagreed, but then from your comments, I wasn't sure.
I thought it was.
Well, my, my inclination at the moment is to hold it at seven.
Okay.
To hold it at status quo until we have a full range of information about the problem, about, to make a good decision about whether it should be at seven or five.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I might, make a motion to approve the committee appointments as presented in our packet for a term of three years, July 1, 17 to June 30, 2020.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Do we have to take him out?
Yeah, the, the exception there would be the, the Alexander Arman Trout one. Uh, because that's, that's going to be acted on separately, because it's a shorter term. But, so I'll, I'll, I'll assume that that was your motion.
As presented, yes.
Okay. Any, okay, so we have a motion as second on, uh, approving, uh, these members as presented. Now, as presented, Ted is an alternate member of the planning board. We are dropping a member back because Terry is, is coming off. We also have a new member application that we have already tabled. So I just want to point that out and perhaps it's best at this point to keep Ted as an alternate and then, and then make, have that conversation with. Let them work their own. The new applicants, because there's another alternate on the board besides Ted.
That's correct.
So the chair in that case would give us a recommendation as to what. But I, and I, I do support the motion, I think, because I do think it's a discussion. So the chair in that case would give us a recommendation as to what, but I, and I, I do support the motion, I think, because I do think it's a discussion we have to have, you know, going to seven and five, but I don't know that we're gonna learn much more in the next two weeks to make that decision at that point. But perhaps, you know, by, when we're doing this next year, we'll have a better idea of, of where we want to go with that, and then we can go there with a plan, and perhaps with a plan that, as you, as you suggest, some members on the board may be ready to, to retire, and, and it makes it a little bit easier, and you don't have to basically throw somebody off to get down that level.
That's all I meant by that, it's just.
And my last two cents before we get off of this, I do think, I'm just gonna pitch again that if they are scheduled for November, that we see if there's any way that, that annually, we have the chair of that committee liaison to us, instead of this board liaising with them.
Committee gives us a report, yeah.
And Ken can work this over time, but trying to see if we can't bump them up in the schedule to spend some more time with the planning board folks sooner, so when we get to making decisions further on down the line, we actually know it. A lot of the questions that you're asking have answers to them.
Could we ask that committee chair in the interim to provide whatever information he can about the way things have gone? Had they had trouble meeting the quorum, et cetera, et cetera? I think that would be valuable information.
Yeah, I think, and, and I think the liaison to that, I think it's Mark. Um, you know, we'll, we'll let the liaison work with the chair, at least initially, and then report back to us, and then at that point, you'll be able to let us know when they.
By this time next year, we'll, we'll have something that'll stay the same or change.
And, and hopefully earlier, so that everybody anticipates it coming along, so that we don't have the discussion under.
I thought he was gonna say next month. By this time next month, no, 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 by this time next year, we'll have it all figured out.
Okay, so we have the motion on the floor, is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, if not, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? Doug, are you gonna, are you in favor?
I'll abstain. Am I allowed to do that?
No, you can't.
I'll vote for. Do you have a conflict of interest?
No.
That's right.
So that's a unanimous, uh, vote, yeah. The, the rules on abstentions are clear, are spelled out on the charter, the only way you can abstain on a vote is obviously on minutes if you weren't at the meeting, but also if you have a financial interest in, um, you, you can't abstain because you don't want to vote. That's the way our rules are, okay.
I appreciate the public comments about, about this.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, for, for coming tonight, I really appreciate that.
Good seeing you, buddy.
Okay, next item is to reappoint a committee member who only wants to serve one more year.
I move to appoint Alex Armentraut to the ordinance review committee for a term of one year effective July first, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Oh, of course, second.
Thank you.
Can't do much damage in here.
Any discussion on, on the motion?
Why only a year, is it filling, didn't you say the three years normally?
The three-year terms normally, um, Alex is a, uh.
Alex.
Has been a very valuable member of the ordinance review committee for a long time, and he's actually, has contributed significantly even when he wasn't a member of the committee.
Yep.
We had an unexpired term last year that was a year, and he, I finally convinced him to, to join the committee so that he could vote on these items that he put an awful lot of work into, and he did. And I think his issue is that because the ordinance review committee meets mostly during the winter, occasionally, he does spend a lot of the winter away. At this point, he knows that he will be here for this upcoming winter, but not beyond that, so he didn't want to hold the term down, uh, where he wouldn't be a, a productive member, so that's, that's the reason for it. And as the liaison, I would recommend that he, uh, be approved on that.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Okay, the next item is to reappoint the list of town officers, and you have that in your packet, this we have to do every year, it's a boilerplate situation, and you can see the list, uh, this year, I don't think we have any, uh, funny things like we did last year when we had a interim police chief or a police chief and things of that nature. At the present time, the auditor position is vacant because that was a, I think it was a three-year contract.
Yeah, that's.
With the auditor, and we are in the process of going out and, and obtaining, uh, new proposals just to do our due diligence as the select board, because the audit really is the select board's responsibility, um, and so we're, we've had the same auditor for quite some time, and we're just going to see what else might be out there, if we might want to do something different, so that position is vacant at the time, and we'll have responses from that RFP, are they coming in?
Wednesday is the deadline.
So, just out of curiosity, what, what significance is there not having, um, Randy on there as police chief?
He is.
Yeah.
Oh, he wasn't listed under the police department portion of mine, sorry.
Oh, yeah, he's up, up in the, up in the top part.
That would be a problem if he wasn't listed.
Yeah, no, well, that's, yeah, okay, there he is, mixed amongst everybody else.
Yeah, yeah, he's listed in the, among the department heads.
For discussion purposes, I move to reappoint the town officers for the town of Rockport effective July first, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Second. Moving second, and, and second from Doug down here, okay.
I, I had a question on this, and I'm sure there's an awesome answer for it. So, all the people in this appointments list that don't include our officers, though we do appoint the officers too on the backside, I guess I'm just curious, we have a pretty bright line between us, the select board, and our town employees, so I'm totally approving Rick makes sense and doing this makes sense, but I'm just curious, this is, for me, one of the few times that we do anything that involves any of the town employees, why do we appoint them but then aren't their bosses?
Yeah, that, it, it is a prob, it is.
It's a, it's a statutory requirement, I believe.
And I figured it was something ridiculous like that.
It is, and nobody's really been able to answer, well, what happens if you don't approve them, but I hire them.
Yeah, right.
You know, it puts us in a, it potentially could put us in a conflict situation, um.
I know, the lawyers.
Linda's raising her hand over there.
I believe Rick actually appoints them and you're confirming his appointment.
Yeah, for department heads, the select board, uh, confirms all of Rick's, Rick does the, uh, the exploration, the interviewing and the hiring, and then, and then he comes to the select board with a recommendation, uh, which the select board needs to confirm.
That's how it is with schools to, and the superintendent.
What, uh, a question?
Oh, teachers, right, don't, don't they do it?
Yeah, the, the, the board oversees the superintendent, who oversees everybody else, but we are employees of the district.
Right.
Right.
Do we, do we have any background on the auditor's vacancy as to whether they are leaving us or we're leaving them, or?
Their, their contract was up, and we, we decided to, uh, to do an RFP, just to see what else is out there, just as a due diligence piece for the select board, not necessarily, and they may end up being rehired. But it's just, it's an opportunity for us after a number of years to say, well, what else is out there?
And the due date for that is when?
Wednesday.
So is that something we'll be handling in the next select board meeting?
Yeah, once, we'll, we'll go through the, go through and see how well they meet and make a recommendation back to the board. And, um, it depends on how long it takes us, but I would expect we'd get it to you back as quickly as possible, because the quicker you guys make a decision, the, the faster we can get the audit done the next time.
Yep.
Oh, all these people are hires by you.
By me, right.
Does that include the lawyers?
No, the lawyers hire from you. The lawyers, your hire.
Uh, so, the select board hires the lawyer, and the town council, and the select board hires the auditor.
How long's their term, the attorneys?
The attorneys, it's a three-year, we're in the ser, just finished the first year of a three-year contract.
Two more left, and.
Um, and from everything I hear, uh, both in my interaction with, with the council and with the staff's interaction with the council, is it, this is, this is a new attorney for us, uh, at the start of the last contract, and it's worked out very well.
Could I ask a question of the town manager? The, um, the police officers, I'm familiar with all except for Antonio.
Oh, he's the new, uh.
Just hired him.
And, and only because I haven't had any interactions with him, I have heard good things about this individual. Yeah, and I do not speed in Rockport. Uh, is, I mean, is this, you, you've met this individual, you spent some time with?
Oh, yeah.
You like him?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yep. He's still on proba, he's on probation, uh, right now.
That's never good for our police officers.
They're on probation.
Standard three.
Do we, do we, uh, do we owe money, do we owe money for his hire?
We don't know, they have to, they have to send us a bill.
When they bill us, we might, yes.
Oh, so we do, we're just not talking.
Well, now, if they watch that on TV, they may, they may send us a bill.
God bless you, you know, checks in the mail.
It's a rarity, because he's already academy trained, and so he doesn't have to go to the academy, so we don't have to pay all that overtime when he's gone for.
And, and the buyback of, of, you know.
We've already got the money to pay that when they do send the bill.
Right. That'll come out of that reserve.
From the other people that's left, actually.
Did we ever get our money when we lost that other officer? Which, that was like.
Cooper to the state police.
Cooper to the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got money for him.
We got money back from him.
So, I mean, we've, I think we've got enough to pay him, yeah, just in reserve.
Could I move the question, or whatever we do at this point? I was just about to say, are we ready to vote on this? Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, that, uh, motion carries unanimously. And we have another annual, uh, thing to do, uh, to approve the order of municipal officers regarding payment of outstanding or delinquent property taxes.
I move to approve the order of municipal officers regarding payment of outstanding or delinquent property taxes, should I have the year in there?
Nope, fine.
End of statement, motion.
Does have a motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion on this item?
How are we, how are we looking, Linda? We have a lot of people that you're gonna send stuff out to, or are we doing pretty good?
We're doing pretty good, because we just sent out notices before the thirty-day notices, we sent out about six hundred letters, and we're getting a lot of payments in.
Good, it's, it's not too bad.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? No, that's unanimous vote. Okay. Uh, the last item under new business is discussion of a possible joint meeting or workshop with the library committee. I'm not necessarily gonna take any action on this this evening, but, um, what I wanted, and, and the chair of the library committee reached out to me, to make sure that they were included as we find a path forward for the library. I think the first, my opinion, the first step of that is gonna be the research project, which is, uh, Rick is working on engaging with the firm that, that, uh, the prior select board chose for that, um, and I think that one of the first things that we will want to do, and again, trying to find a path forward for the library, is to have a joint workshop with the select board and, uh, with the, uh, the research folks, so that we can get an idea and let them know what we want to find out, uh, and then have a, you know, have a, come to a, an agreement on that and then move forward with that. And, and one of the reasons I asked for the dates is that we're probably looking at the second half of July for that, because I would like the whole board to be able to be here for that. And, uh, I know, Rick, you let me know earlier today that he was free sometime after the fourth.
Yeah, and I do have his, his cell phone number, um.
Who, who is he?
Bruce Lockwood from, um, Portland Research Group.
Uh-huh.
So I can text him, if you, if you're looking at a date, I can text him. He'll, he, he's avail, he's, he's watching his cell phone till about eight-thirty, at which, which point he's going home and he doesn't get cell phone service at home. But he said he's pretty free in the evenings after, after next week.
Do, do we have a, a timeframe, I mean, I know in the past when they talked about joining fire departments before we got the cart ahead of the horse, they had a timeframe as to when things were hoped to have happened. I mean, because I really would like to think if there's something that we could put on paper that people would look at and get focused on, so that they have a, just an idea of how things are gonna happen, when they're gonna happen.
As part of the, and, and I asked Rick to, to get this information to you guys, as part of their response to the RFP that we put out for this research, which, by the way, they were the only one who responded to it, uh, they had a time, a timeline of developing the, uh, research product or survey, whatever you want to call it, and how much time would be allowed for responses, and when their analysis would take place and when we would get it back. So the answer to the question is yes, they do have a timeframe, and I think that what, that's what we would talk about during our, our joint workshop, is how that.
You're looking at, I, from my memory.
It was eight-ish weeks or so from start to finish? Uh, for this research to come back, and then we'll have that deliverable product, and then this board, along with the library committee, will need to look at that, and hopefully that's gonna give us a lot of answers.
That would be a good thing.
And those eight weeks were broken down into what seemed to be pretty logical and reasonable, couple-week chunks. It would be worth it to, to look over, because, you know, I was a little, uh, hesitant going in, but there was a very good proposal the, the person put forward.
And I think, uh, yeah, you're right on that, and, and, and when they come to meet with us, I think they'll reiterate that, and they'll explain the whole process to us. So my suggestion would be for us to schedule a workshop, and I don't have a date in mind at the moment, I'll look at the calendar in a minute, but to schedule a workshop where the, the select board, the library committee get together for some period of time, let's say an hour, so we have a little time to, to hash out amongst ourselves what we would like to know, and then, and then have the, uh, the research folks come in at that point, you know, arrive an hour after we've started, and then we can, at that point, we can report back to them, so we can have our discussion, basically, as the two groups together before they get there. And then they come in, we can relay our discussion to them, and they can relate to us what they have to do, and then we can, you know, hopefully come out of that with moving forward. That would be my suggestion.
I'm a fan of that, and I'm also a fan of, um, trying to the best of our abilities to not necessarily go too fast, but keep forward momentum, and so, just as it relates to the library, I think as closely as, as logical after that meeting with the library committee and that consultant, that we as a select board meet, and hopefully we'll have a clearer picture about how we want to move forward, so with this new board, we can be very deliberative on a appropriate timeline that gives us enough time but doesn't kick this down for years.
Well, no, my point is where, you know, you two are the longest here, where would you like to see us a year from now? Where, where do we want to, you know?
Off this board?
No, no, I'm just saying.
We've got less than one year left.
I mean, the answer to, for me, the answer is to have, my goal would be to have a proposal to put on the ballot in June of twenty eighteen that the select board and the library committee feel really good about, and that we have buy-in from the community so that we can move forward.
That's what I'm looking for, I mean, that's where.
I think November is too soon.
Yeah, I don't think we can do November. I'm, I'm just saying.
And so, but, but, as Owen is right, I mean, we don't want to move too fast, but we do have to keep moving. You know, hopefully if, I mean, let's say we engage with them in the second half of July, and then, and then say it takes eight weeks, that's, that's, uh, you know, early September, let's say we have results back from the research, and then we can act on that at that point, and decide, and then, and then we have to engage an architect and, and move forward and.
And that's where I'm going with Ann, is now you have an idea from the chair that we would like to get things done in June, which would tickle me, and I'm sure the rest of the, the town. Yes.
And, and basically, the idea is we've got to find a path to move forward, um, and, and I think that this research is the first step to doing that.
We're on it.
Well, I'm a big fan of research and data, and, you know, obviously, that's the way we're going to go, um, and perhaps we'll learn something new.
We might.
But I'm rather dubious, because I, as we go forward into this research, what you're gonna have is you're gonna have two factions in town uh, that are going to be doing everything they can to, um, affect the outcome of the research, plus the third faction in town, which is going to be, um, the people who really don't care much whether we have a library or not. So, I, I just have a feeling this might prolong the agony, um, but, you know.
But I want to, just so you know, we have talked about that, and, and it was part of the RFP, and this firm has, and part of their presentation was very clear about how they would make sure that it was one person, one response, so that we don't have a stuff the ballot box type situation.
Well, what you end up with too, when you do surveys, and, you know, I'd like to hear what they have to say, but when you do surveys, you know, the first thing you learn is what people who return surveys think. You know, your, whatever your response rate is, ten, twenty, thirty, maybe fifty.
We're hoping for a high response rate.
Yeah, okay, um.
And that's, that's on us, that's on us to make sure we get the word out, I mean, we had a tremendous response rate for the survey at Midcoast Solid Waste.
Yeah.
And so that was, uh, so, but you're absolutely right, well, that, without a high response rate, the, the data is of minimal value.
One of the challenges, I think, is that the, 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 we're, we're trying to develop, and we're working on this now, is, is a plan to get more than just the people at the opposite ends of the spectrum, and get more of the people in the middle to participate in this, in the research. And to get them excited about that, about waiting for and anticipating being able to have their voice heard. And, um, so, you know, that we're, there's some discussion going on now about how do we do that? How do we get people excited? How do we get them to say, oh, I can't wait for that thing to. How do we get people excited? How do we get them to say, oh, I can't wait for that thing to hit so that I can take part and have my voice heard? And, and reach that middle group.
Yep, and let me just say this. When I was out campaigning, okay, the thing that really surprised me. Is that there were quite a few people who actually said, you know, we don't need a library in Rockport. And so what do we do when the research comes back and that silent majority that we don't know about comes back and says. No, let's not, not provide library services in Rockport. You know, then what do we do? So be careful what we wish for.
Well, we wish for an accurate representation of the people.
Okay.
And if that's what the accurate representation is, then this board has a, has a decision to make.
I, I agree with you Ken. I think that the most troublesome part of the situation as it has been prolonged for a long time is. We don't, we don't have really good data about what people in the town, what the preponderance of people in the town think. We have vocal sides and we have a lot of people in the middle, as Doug said, who probably have varying degrees of opinion about it, but it's not clear. And so, it, it would be healthy for us as a board to start with a discussion, to gain clarity about what the town really wants.
Well, I would also, I would also disagree that we don't have much information. I mean, I have a timeline here. Of what this town has been through in terms of going back to Emily Lusher's survey. And then from that, the several votes that we've had. So, you know. There's been four years of information that we've been gathering and it, it hasn't really made us happy, so we keep doing something else.
Well, we've gathered.
You know, we'll go through it one more time and see what happens.
But I think we'll go through it a little differently this time.
May I ask if there's something that's possible timeline-wise or legality-wise? If, if our survey company comes back with a survey. Is it possible to send those out in the tax bill? So that way they get to everybody. I mean, we're already mailing them out anyway.
It's good, it, it figured into the price as a direct mail anyway.
Well, that way you're covering everybody instead of.
Right, this, but it's a direct mailing to everybody. One of the goals is that you want, you want people to have ease of participation. And the more people that, 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 uh, participate, uh, the better it is for us. But figured into the price is already a direct mail and rather than getting it confused with the tax bill.
I didn't know that, but I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've, they've had, they gave a quite detailed presentation in the response to the RFP about how they would reach people.
Maybe we should see that. Is it one mailing to each household or to each adult in the household?
It, there'll be a cover letter that will explain how, i- if other people in the household are, are, um, eligible to participate. Then, um, here's the means of which you can do that.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and that's something you'll be able to an- when you have the conversation with a, when you have the conversation with the researcher. Uh, he'll be able to answer those questions.
And I have to say that I think when you see the response to the RFP that was sent to us by these folks, you'll be impressed, cause I was. They cover a lot of the stuff that you're talking about. Um, a lot of the, a lot of the foibles of, because they've done it before. They've done it before.
And you're gonna send that out or something?
Yeah, I'll send that out.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Back on our joint meeting date.
I was, and, and I was gonna, uh, ask the town manager. Um, and, because I'm not that familiar with the, you know, how are agenda items in general for the select board looking? Moving forward, because I'm looking at that Monday, July twenty-fourth, which would be our second select board meeting of the month in July. If we don't need that, then I would suggest that as a date.
I would thi- I think that that is a, is a good, good plan, is to use that date for that conversation.
That we have a workshop with the library committee and then, and then ask the, uh, the researchers to come in as well.
Uh, it, it, July twenty-fourth?
And that would be where?
If I can get them.
Um, probably here.
Yeah, you, you're gonna wanna livestream that.
Wanna stream that because you have a lot of people in town that are interested in it.
People, that, people will, um.
Probably oughta do it upstairs.
They'll, they'll pay attention. A lot of people livestream.
Yeah.
So it'd be a seven o'clock?
Um, let's hold off on the time for now. We might, might be a little bit earlier.
Okay.
Uh, but I wanna, I want to work with the library committee on scheduling that time.
Is the, is the date the twen- you said the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, which is Monday, Monday, July twenty-fourth. And, uh, as I say, my preference would be to have the select board and the library committee meet for some period of time, whether it's an hour, an hour and a half. Before the researcher gets here so that we can have a conversation about what we would like to see and then have the researcher come in and we can relay the conversation. And then listen to their presentation about how they would go about doing it.
My only fear of that is that you'll get too far ahead of the researcher. That you'll, you'll be, you'll be making decisions about how to proceed. In a way that maybe is.
Well, I don't think.
That.
I would only challenge that and say that I think what would come out of a meeting with the library committee isn't necessarily how we're going to proceed.
Right.
But from the library committee, what are the most valuable things for you all? What were the things that you didn't want us to come, where are you all at? Because here's where we're at and then we can at least do that cross-pollinization. So when questions are asked that we're dealing with, with the surveyor, we're at least on the same, I'm, I'd be a little concerned about. At least not touching base with the library committee to figure out exactly where they're at.
Yeah, and I don't think our, in our conversation with the library committee, this board, we don't wanna talk about the how. That's their job.
As long as you stay away from the how.
We wanna talk about is what do we wanna come out of this with?
Okay, right.
What answers do we wanna get? And so that.
What did you all hear? This is what we've been hearing.
So, you know, the, as far as the methodology, I mean, one of the reasons we're going with this professional firm is because we don't know how to do this. Um, so, I think it's, uh, we don't wanna get into that. We'll let them take care of that, in my opinion.
And the last thing that I'll say on this topic is, um, and I know that you all didn't see the, the response for the RFP. But I was very impressed with how thorough the individual covered our own town history. It was relatively clear from that proposal that they had gone back and reviewed a lot of the live streams, had seen a lot of the meetings. They were able to tell us a lot about our library project, having actually never even been in the town. And so I was very impressed by that.
Yeah, they did their homeworks.
So when can we expect that, RFP?
I'm gonna see if I can get it off my computer right this second.
You can get it right now.
If I, if I can get on my machine.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on that item? Um, if not, uh, we now go into our wastewater section of our meeting.
I move to exit as select board members and enter in as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Okay, we moved and seconded. All in favor? No, no opposition?
Drive safe.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, for the new folks, we have to do this. It's a formality. We have to close the select board and enter as, as wastewater commissioners. Okay, first item is the, uh. The June commitment of the debt fees.
I move to commit the June commitment of sewer user debt fees for the period of April twenty-sev- seventeen. Totalling twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
They moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? And for the new folks, this is just our legal piece that we have to do every, every month.
But it is always, it's kind of fun to go over and look at.
See who's paying their bill or not.
Paying their bill, not, who are the big users, who aren't? This was the stuff that I thought was interesting when I first got on the board.
I do have, Forty West Street, is that the rec field? I mean, the, the old RES? Forty West Street.
I don't know.
Well, we're paying a bill there and I don't know if there's any water. I know twenty-two is.
It says Rockport Town of.
Right.
It must be that.
Sixteen bucks.
Who's the treasurer? Rick is.
I am.
Pay that bill.
We just approved him.
I guess where I'm going is, I mean, I didn't know we had, I think it's the rec, the RES property.
Right.
And I'm just wondering why we're still, if there's nothing going there, why we're.
I don't think.
Well, you know what it is? It's, it's the, uh, it's the debt fees. You pay debt fees.
Just by, just by going by.
Yeah, if it goes by, you pay the debt fees. And that's because it increases the value of the property because there is sewer service available.
What's up with Penn Bay Medical Center? I got a text back from the researcher and he said the twenty-fourth does work for him.
Okay, good.
They're not behind. I mean, they are, but it, they just generate a lot of.
Any, uh, further questions? On this motion?
So just to be clear, these are thirty day.
Right, the businesses are thirty days and the residences are every ninety days, so, and every third month you'll see a much longer list.
Uh, jeez, I just saw Stuart outside before the meeting. Should've talked to him.
You owe him money, buddy.
Okay, uh, if no further discussion, vote on the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We also need to.
Do signatures.
Yeah, we've got some signatures. We'll get those afterwards. We also have to, uh, uh, do the order of wastewater commissioners. Very similar to the order for the taxes.
I move to approve the order of wastewater commissioners regarding payment of outstanding or delinquent wastewater charges.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed?
I move to exit as wastewater commissioners and enter back in as select board.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we're back in select board and we're to the liaison section, report section of our meeting. This is where we report to the board on the activities of the various committees. That we are liaisoning with.
Nothing to report here.
So it'll be a short one this time, but Owen, do you have anything?
Alright, so I actually took notes from the pathways committee, uh, again. So here's my brief update from pathways. Uh, so the maritime farms project, uh, that's the new sidewalk there. That is a joint Camden, Rockport project. Um, it is progressing nicely. Um, we believe that MDOT has worked in a lot of our suggestions. Uh, Town of Rockport's come up with our money. I think Camden's still trying to figure out their money. But as far as that project, things are actually going nicely and we're not having too many issues with MDOT being receptive to our stuff. Um, they wanted to do a ribbon cutting for the high sidewalk and when we talked tentatively, I said. You gotta, you gotta shoot for the end of July because we've got the railing. But now I'm wondering, after getting your update, if maybe even we should go early to mid-August for a ribbon.
We should have a better idea as, as we get later in the month. As we get into July, we should have a better idea of when they're gonna be finished.
I'll let them know that, give me like a week or two or two weeks or something and then we'll have a better idea for that. Um, at one point, uh, Jamie proposed two different options that we have. Um, for an RTP grant. One was basically trying to connect this parking lot. Down here between us and Rockport Marine with Brook Street. Which is that teeny, teeny little spur off of Bochamp?
Mechanic.
I'm sorry, mechanic, thank you. And even though that seemed like an interesting thing, the, uh, geography of that site and the amount of money that it may cost to do that. We kind of ruled that one out and no one would ever really see it. So it'd be cool to have it there, but not necessary at this time. Uh, but the other option was a small connector on an existing road. That basically if you go up from Main Media a little bit, there's an old road that goes back into the back of Maritime Farms. Near country in way.
Drove down it the other day.
So it's something that could be improved to be a more robust walking path. And we thought with the connecting the Main Media folks to the Maritime Farms for both lunchtime activities. Evening beer runs and bus rides back home made sense. So this is just a preliminary. No decisions have been made, but they may start working on a grant. Well, the only discussion was which of these two projects should we look for grant funding on? Uh, the next meeting we'll be having is actually at the middle school site. We keep discussing the Riverwalk, uh, but there's a lot of discussion around what exactly does the land do there? And then people are recalling things differently, so we figured we would actually have our next meeting at the middle school. And walk where the potential Riverwalk, uh, site would be along that area. And as, the only other thing that I have for notes on here is, why, why do we have a, a Board of Assessment review? But we don't have a liaison to that. Is it because they meet so infrequently? I don't.
They meet infrequently and, and I guess the answer is I don't know. There's never been once since I've been on the board.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's.
Are they important?
Yes, oh yeah.
Be very important. It's another quasi judicial board.
How have I overlooked this board for so long?
It's quasi ju- it's more, even more quasi judicial than planning board because all of their decisions are.
Oh, this is Kerry's, the people that Kerry would deal with if someone has an issue with how much their property is valued at. Gotcha.
So if they don't like Kerry's decision, then they can appeal to the Board of Assessment Review.
Right.
Some towns don't have them. The county has a service that you can, you can use the county service if you like. Uh, so some towns, uh, smaller towns don't have a Board of Assessment Review and, and then any decisions that way go to the county board.
Gotcha.
Um, Midco Solid Waste, we meet this Wednesday. Um, there should be some new board members. Uh, Tom should be there, not there.
He'll be in Germany.
Uh, he'll be in Germany drinking beer, I'm sure, while we're slaving over. All the, right, um.
Do you have any other?
So not really much to report, uh, on Midco Solid Waste. And the rec committee, I know, did, did you talk with, um, Suzanne? After, I know that you guys were gonna talk after our last meeting. Uh, it's just more of a trying to get on the same page. Um, I know that that committee very much does not want miscommunications or lack of.
Neither do I. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, I'm not sure about the timing of it was before, but Suz- Suzanne Mike.
A little while ago when they had their last meeting.
And I met a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
Um, to, to, to go over what budget items are still outstanding and what we want to, um. Uh, what, what we have to buy coming up in the next budget cycle.
Okay. Uh, and that's it. Other than I just, uh, I will try to empower the rec committee to continue to work with you. To try to make sure that we've got great solid lines of communication.
Uh, mine are brief. Ordinance review has not met, although I did take the liberty of taking a summer session of, for the ORC off the table. Um, we had thought we might need one if the marijuana question was, was, went a different way than that, that we would need to, uh. Spend a lot of time developing an ordinance for where we were gonna allow the smoking clubs and all that kinda stuff. But given the, the strong sentiment on the vote, I think that we can just have the staff, um, take care of that and put in a prohibition on it. Uh, so there won't be a summer session for the ORC, uh, unless this board feels differently and you guys can feel free to. But I don't think we have any pressing issues that require.
I would just say I'm disappointed by how that vote turned out. I will not try to challenge that and go against the will of people, but I was really hoping for a different.
Um, ambulance review did meet, um, a couple of weeks ago and for the new guys who are gonna be liaising to that committee. Uh, you need to know that, um, they are likely gonna be looking for some changes to their agreement. Uh, their call volume is down fairly significantly since they started their contract. Uh, and call volume is what drives that business. Um, and the way, just as a review for, for you guys, the way the ambulance contract works for us is that we have the four-town agreement. To use Northeast Mobile Health. When we had the Camden First Aid, uh, failed here a few years ago, we looked at RFPs from several organizations. Northeast Mobile Health came in with a hugely lower price than anybody else, which caused us to say, how can you possibly do this? And the reason is that they already had a base here. They do a lot of transports. They have a contract with Penn Bay. Uh, and they make a lot of their money on these transfers rather than transports. Uh, and they, they figured, well, if we have the call volume for the nine-one-one work, then we can make it work with this number. Well, the call volume for the first year was fine, but it has been steadily declining since then, which is good because it means we're more healthy, but it's tough for their business model. Um, so they are gonna be making a proposal sometime soon for, uh, reducing the level of service on the weekends. For eliminating one staff position on the weekends. Uh, the contract right now spells out how many crews they have to have on for the various shifts through the week. They're gonna be proposing dropping that down a little bit on the weekends. Um, their, their history of calls says that, you know, they probably can do it. The tough part is in a small community like this, you're looking at one, two calls a day sometimes. And if those two calls happen to come in at the same time, then you have an issue and they would then have to call for mutual aid. And the way their contract is written, if they call for mutual aid, which would be from Rockland in most cases, they have to pay for it. We don't pay that. They, it's part of their agreement with us. Whatever mutual aid is required, that, that, that comes out of their money. So basically as a for-profit enterprise, they're not gonna suggest those types of things unless, if they think that they're gonna end up having to call a lot of mutual aid. Because then they, they end up losing money on the deal. Uh, and they do also have an issue with staffing, uh, and just availability of, of the EMT professionals. Whether they're paramedics or basic or advanced level professionals, it's hard for them to attract people. Um, and so that's another reason that they are looking to possibly do that. So when you guys go to the next meeting, they will come back with a proposal for that. And some folks in some of the other towns will, uh, balk at that. I know there are some. I know there are some members on that committee who, who still want that paramedic level service there all the time with the, and, and we can do that, but there's a cost to it.
I actually talked to one of the folks that do want a paramedic on duty at all times. And they said, does he fix my car? Well, I don't know if he fixes your car, but he shoves his head inside of it anyway.
Yeah, right, okay, my car hits in a yard all the time.
What did he say, like a hundred and fifty thousand split between the four towns to, is what they may come back with?
If, if they want that, and, and it wouldn't, there would still be paramedics on duty, uh, but they sometimes go with what they call a fly car.
Yeah, he was really concerned by that.
Uh, which is that, you know, when the call, when the 911 call comes in, some certain percentage of the calls require a paramedic and others don't. Uh, so when the 911 call comes in, the, the truck is dispatched. Uh, and if they can get more information while they're underway or when they get there, that hey, this is a, you know, it's, as opposed to somebody who fell down in a nursing home and they just have to pick back up and put back in bed again. Or is this a, you know, a man who's having breathing difficulty with chest pain, which requires a paramedic to push the drugs? And they'll send a fly car out to, to help with that response. So those are the types of issues that they'll, that you'll be talking to them about. Uh, the service people are very happy with, we did have a hiccup with them back in, when was it, December, November, December?
Yeah.
Uh, they had a management change and they had a situation where they had one person there who knew everything. Uh, and then that one person left and that, that meant there was a rocky period there where the, the responses were not good, the communications were poor.
They changed to using the IM responding.
Right, as a, as a result of that, that meeting, which was a, that was a tougher meeting where everybody came in and said, look, you got to change that. And I think it was.
Yeah, that, that's.
Linwood came in from the dispatch from Knox County and he, and he, as I say, spoke forthrightly.
As only Linwood could.
Right. Uh, and they made that change and since then, and, and their new management is, is, they're back on an even keel and.
We haven't had a problem.
Yeah, the service is very good, everybody who's dealt with them has, has been very pleased, so that part, that aspect of it is good. Uh, cemetery committee needs to meet soon, um, and that's all I have.
May I revisit a topic briefly?
Uh, which topic would you like to revisit?
The, uh, RFP for, um, the survey.
Okay.
Uh, Rick was kind enough to send me, uh, the RFP, which I've had a brief moment to look over here. And, um, you know, indeed it says all the right things. During my career, I had plenty of opportunity to look over surveys and whatnot. So it's a slick presentation, but everything I see in here just convinces me that I, I really believe that doing this survey is going to rip off some scabs and bring us a heap of woe. Yeah, I'll, you know, I could talk with them and let them answer my questions, but, uh, you know, the way they're going to send out the numbers here, I just don't think it's going to work. So, and I just want that on the record, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further business or any further comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Can we talk about that before we take a vote? I mean, I might want to drag this out a little bit.
Always welcome to.
Motion to adjourn is not debatable. You can vote against it. All in favor?
There we go.